All right, so tonight we have to project a bit more than we normally do because we don't have microphones to help us with that task. So I'm just going to remind everybody sitting at the table that when you're speaking, just speak a little bit louder. But I'd like to call our monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education to order at 7 o'clock. I will continue to do the roll call because I think it's helpful for the viewing audience and also anybody who comes and joins us to know who is here. You have the benefit of seeing our signs a little more easily now that we're back in our home space. This is very nice. It feels like a full circle moment. It's been two plus years since we've been in here for a meeting, so it's really great to be back in here. So I'll start with myself and the rest of the board members. I'm Deborah Shute. I am the chair. Jay Spivak, vice chair.
Present, thanks Deb.
Thank you. Jeff Fleischman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Present, thanks Deb.
Laura Young.
Present, thank you Deb.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you Deb.
Fage Singh.
Present, thanks Deb.
Lisa Semenera.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Liz Summercorn.
Present.
Excellent, thank you. And now we'll move on to administrators. Dr. Carnemola, our superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeaniney, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Medic, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Moy, our executive assistant to the superintendent.
Present, thank you.
As well as our board clerk. She takes our minutes for us, which is a very important role there. I will ask if you will all stand up to me and we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I always like to start by reading our mission statement to remind us of the work that we are here to do together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning, a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. So now we get to move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve our Board of Education's regular monthly minutes of June 21st, 2022?
So moved.
Moved by Jackie. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I'll give it to Lynn this time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously. Got that job. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Board of Education's special meeting minutes of June 27th, 2022? All right, Fage has it. And second, Lynn, you want to go again? So all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? So as you'll note in the audience, this is our first meeting back together since June, so that's why those meeting minutes are from there. Our next portion is communication from the public. Again, during COVID, got into a habit of reading kind of instructions of how that works, so I'm going to continue with that tradition. So I will start with an explanation of how this portion of the meeting works. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It's not an opportunity for conversation, rather it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list. There is a list. Shirley, do you have it with you? All right, right there. If you are interested, Ms. Moy will then call you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with the previous comment if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she'll alert you with a 30-second warning, and at the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. Ms. Moy, do we have someone?
We do. We have Michael Farrell. However, he's not an Avon resident, so...
All right. Is there a policy for that?
I think it has to be... I think you'd have to be a resident.
Your policy is they have to be a resident. We are better in the situation before, but I think maybe someone could make a motion to allow someone to speak. That isn't one of the policy.
Mr. Farrell did email information looking for the auditorium name to be changed. You're familiar with the circumstances. Are you guys comfortable with Mr. Farrell speaking this evening?
I'll make the motion.
To approve.
To suspend the rules to allow him to speak during public comments.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we discuss?
Absolutely.
So I'm okay with, under the given circumstances, understanding why he's talking and how it relates to the schools, but otherwise, no one just hoping that anybody's not...
Yep. I agree with that as well.
Okay, so I understand the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Right, because the motion was to suspend the rules for this incident only.
Correct.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Looks unanimous. Mr. Farrell, if you would come forward and just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Farrell, 52 K Street, Canton. I did live here for 50 years, and I graduated in 1982, if that makes any difference to the board. Welcome back. Hope they turn the air conditioning off for you next month. Madam Chair, I just have a hand also. You can hand them out to your folks as an event upstairs. Real quick, I'm just going to go over some bullet points. I assume everybody is in receipt of the email I sent. I really don't know what motivated me to send it, other than every now and then I watch Mr. Holland's Opus, and it motivates me at the end of the movie. I was... I'm a band geek. I did eight years in the band program here, and I did four years under Joe Donato. And I just got the idea that, you know, the guy is awesome. He's a hometown kid, still lives here with his wife, and I'd like to see what he did for this band and this school community kind of memorialized, if you will. So I fired off this post on Facebook, and I'm never on Facebook, and just floated the idea on a website, or not a website, but it's a page on Facebook. You knew you grew up in Avon when, and then you can fill in the blank. And I just threw the name Joe Donato out there, and I think I noted in the email there were just a remarkable number of responses. In four hours, there was 119 responses. Overnight, the thing blew up. And they're still blowing it up. Everybody wants to know what the status is. I don't know what the status is, so I figured I'll go to the meeting and see if I can be heard. So thank you for hearing me, first of all. Thank you for allowing this. Real quick, Joe Donato served in the Army, graduated Columbia. He's played for some really, really renowned artists. Pavarotti, feel it, that's pretty cool. Arthur Feeler, that's right up his alley. He's a marching band guy. He's played Good Suite Opera, Springfield Symphony, Harvard Symphony. He started the program here in 1959. And the very first year that he started the program, the auditorium wasn't even finished yet. He had the first concert in the gym. Too forget me. Not 39 anymore. He was the joint choral band director for his first three years, and he literally advanced hundreds and hundreds of kids up to all-state and nationwide competitions. They played in some really elite performing groups. He led the first band in the first time in the Avon Memorial Day Parade. First ever exchange concert program, first international exchange concert, which I was fortunate enough to be a... Is that it? I'm done?
No.
30 seconds. Thank God. I was fortunate to be a part of that. Went to Montreal. We played on the steps of the Capitol. That's... Imagine the impact that has on students. Started the summer theater with Franny Lynch. Franny Lynch is one of the respondents on Facebook. Started the jazz band. Still a resident here. Lived here since 1961. A lot of teachers in Avon touch a lot of kids. I was fortunate. My three kids were very fortunate. Awesome school system. Joe Donato touched the world of kids. He really did. Germany, Belgium, brought kids over here internationally. I think it's an idea that is obviously in its infancy, but I hope you'll entertain further consideration of it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much.
Shirley, do we have another?
Yes, we have Alex Chen.
All right. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Alex Chen. My address is 27 Scarborough Drive in Avon. Last semester, I discovered my son, who was a sophomore, was borrowing other kids' cell phone to play video games. We don't approve video games. And we think it's addictive. It's bad for kids. And so I talked to Mr. Kimball, and I didn't know why the conversation wasn't continued. After a while, he just dropped. Now I think maybe because he was behind. But in any case, I think the current policy leaves a hole for kids to do something like that. And I want to propose to have high school kids not using cell phone completely during the school hours. And I think it's better for their academic performance. It's better for maybe reducing disciplinary actions and would promote the better study environment. And I think we're already doing this for middle school. Why not do it for high school? And that's the only responsible thing to do, because we cannot leave a gaping hole like that for kids to crawl through. And I don't think I have bad kid, so let's not discuss that. I think he's not the only one doing that. And my analogy is, you know, if I leave marijuana in my kitchen, ask my kids not to take it, it's just not realistic. And the best thing to do is not put it in the kitchen. So I think we need to plug this hole. This is a systematic hole for them to explore. I think that's not productive for them. That's all. Thank you for your time. Do you guys have any questions?
Not at this time. Public comment is just your opportunity to speak with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chen. Shirley, do we have anyone else?
That's all.
All right. Thank you very much for participating. Now we will move on to items of information and proposals. Ms. Russo, for the financial report.
Good evening. We did not have a finance committee during the summer, and I'm still working on finalizing our school year 21 figures. We'll have that available in September for that meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to committee and liaison reports. Curriculum and professional practices. Jackie.
We have not met yet. We expect to... It looks like our first meeting will probably be October 25th, if all goes well with the calendar.
All right, thank you. Finance, Jake.
Assistant State, we did not meet over the summer. Our next meeting will be scheduled for September 20th, if it's approved tonight. I'll talk to you then.
All right, thank you. Negotiations would be me. We did have some work going with our administrators this summer. We're hoping that our executive session might resolve that this evening. Also with our safety and security specialists as well, so we'll be having a greater conversation as a board later tonight on that. Next would be policy. Laura.
So the policy committee did not meet in the summer, as is usual. We are scheduled to meet in September. The date is listed tonight for approval. There is a conflict with that date, so I thought it will likely be changed, but we will be meeting in September.
All right, thank you, Laura. So let's remember that when we get to that part of the meeting, because maybe we should make a note. Liaison report from the board representative to capital region education council, Jackie.
No update. Our first meeting will be in September.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Next is the chair's report. That is an opportunity for me to once again recognize how nice it is to be back in this room with everyone. It's much cozier, more conversational. I always enjoyed holding our meetings here, so I'm grateful that we're able to do it again. And it's nice to see familiar faces sitting across from us in the audience. I know how much work has been going on to get this school year started. It's just a week away for our students, but you've been working all summer, and you're getting our staff prepared. Very grateful for all the hiring that's taken place. You know, that's been quite the task, that has just to bring in new teachers and staff, but also grateful as a board of ed that we were able to participate in hiring some of our administrators over the summer. And want to acknowledge that we now have Mr. Jeaniney sitting with us. He has promoted up to assistant superintendent, and we couldn't be more thrilled. We are so grateful to have you. We had our own private kind of meeting where we were able to interview you, but now on Nutmeg TV, I want to acknowledge how grateful we are that you were interested in the job and how proud I am that you were within our district for so many years, and you're bringing that institutional knowledge to this role. So I think that we are very fortunate to have you working with Dr. Carnemola, and that it's just going to be an amazing team. So welcome, even though you've been here, to the table, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you. I feel very fortunate to be here. You know, Avon's a district that means a lot to me, so to further my career here and be part of the district leadership team is really a dream come true, so.
Excellent. And it comes through. I got to say, Jess is very convincing in all of his dedication to the work that he has done in our district, and I'm just, again, very grateful to have you stepping into this role. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want to acknowledge Mr. Medic. We will get to you at the consent calendar to make it official, but you have worn so many hats since you have joined us that I am so happy that we are able to acknowledge your change in goals to assistant superintendent as well. It's an amazing team that I think we're providing for Dr. Carnemola, and that she has to lean on you. You have really been the czar of so many things, and we just are really proud to acknowledge that effort and grateful to have you. And we both have very short distances to drive, so it's just, it's really, it's nice to have you here with us. And I'm very grateful, Mr. Medic, to have you move up in your position as well. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. As I said, almost four years ago, I consider myself truly privileged to work in this district, and I believe that every day. And I thank you all for the trust you've placed in me over the past four years, and will continue to place in me. And I'm very excited to work with Jess, Dr. Carnemola, and the rest of our team, Susan, and the administrators in the building to make 2223 even better than last school year. So thank you.
And I believe you will. So thank you again for wanting to be here and staying on with us, because that matters to us as well. We've had such changes that it's just nice, the people that we've added this summer. It just feels right. It's a good fit, so we're just so grateful. We have Dr. Lockhart sitting in our audience. He's our new high school principal. Incredibly thrilled to have you join our team as well. And I know I made the mistake of asking you how you're doing when you first arrived, and I guess I shouldn't have. We'll let you get the kids into the building, and then it'll feel much more at home for you. I am certain of that, but we are thrilled. I know you've had an opportunity to meet a lot of parents and students already, but obviously, as the school year begins, I'm glad they'll get to meet you. So it's not just you meeting them. So I'm really pleased to be able to present you to everyone as the number one choice that just rose above and beyond. And we are just so grateful for your interest in this district, and can't wait to see what you will do for us in your time here. So, and I hope it's a long time. So welcome. I also want to acknowledge Ms. Wallace is sitting back there. We have promoted her within to be our high school, I mean, our middle school principal. And I just love that story that we're telling more regularly now, that we have such an advanced and capable staff, that the ability to advance you and move you up just says so much to me, because we should be pulling from our staff whenever we can. And we're absolutely thrilled to have you joining us. We had a little bit of more of an interesting situation with your interview, and I apologize, she had to go through two sections, and one was done in person, one was done virtually. And it was very accommodating, because summer schedules are very difficult, but you were a champion. I am just so impressed with everyone that interviewed this summer. Nobody was repetitive. Everybody was smooth as can be. We had a bell involved in a couple of you, and you didn't even move or flinch when it went off, because we were trying to stick to time. And then Dr. Carnemola pointed out to me that you're used to hearing school bells, and it didn't dawn on me, oh, I guess that doesn't cause you to move as quickly. But honestly, just absolutely thrilled. Congratulations. I'm glad we had the opportunity to acknowledge you this evening, too. Mr. Haynes, we're thrilled to have you. I've had an opportunity to bump into you a few times at Central Office, and I will say, you're infectious with your joy and your kindness. And so again, I am absolutely thrilled to have you as a part of our family, and I'm thrilled that people will get to meet you. You'll be working with our students and our staff and our families, and we are so fortunate to have you leading that task. So not only will you be navigating lots of conversations, but you're also helping with the internship program, and that means a lot to us. So we're just thrilled that you're spearheading that, and I'm just glad we can announce you in public as well. So welcome to this family. We are very grateful to have you. I hope I'm not forgetting anybody. I think I've got... If I have, I'll think of it later, maybe I'll speak up again. But I am very grateful to have all of you with us, and hopefully, maybe during board comment, you'll hear some more accolades from other board members. But thank you for joining us this evening, too, because it is a summer meeting, and we understand you've already been working all day. So we are grateful that you are sticking around with us for this. So now, just to keep us on task, Dr. Carnemola, your superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to combine the separate pieces of my report, streamlining a little bit for you this evening, and by way of a bigger picture outlook, out, update, where we've been in the summer and hiring and so forth. The one thing I'll point out before we get into the bigger update is, as is continually the case, particularly in the summer, our enrollment reports change hour to hour and day to day. So the original enrollment report that went out in the board packet just Friday has changed enough that we have 20 more students since Friday, and we actually have another 22 on top of those 20 that are somewhere in the registration process that are not included in that number. So about 42 students, I would expect to see added on to this number the next time that we meet.
Can I ask where... Do you have a sense of where they're coming from? Are they returning from being not in district? Are they moving in?
Some are, you know, with the real estate market the way that it is. Some are moving in. On the other hand, obviously, some are also moving out here and there with the sale of homes. I would say it's more the reverse, though, that folks are moving in with school age children. We also still do have students returning from homeschooling that had left us during the pandemic, and I would expect to see this continue a little bit probably through September, October, because even on top of the 22 I mentioned that aren't here, our office is in communication with a number of folks who are trying to decide how to register when their sale of their home isn't complete yet or the like. So we'll continue managing that. And a little bit more about some places we're paying closer attention to, like pre-K when we get into the updates. Kindergarten, I would say, looks to be what we would expect. We were at, last I checked, this afternoon, 202 kindergarten students. I know that a question we often have is, for reference sake, how many of the registering kindergarten students have gone to pre-K versus not going to go on to pre-K. As you know, that could be pre-K anywhere. It's not necessarily our pre-K program, and it is one of the questions during registration, just to give us a sense. And we have 189 of the 202 that have been to pre-K 3 and/or 4. So that's how we look at kindergarten at present, and fully staffed there again. So it's day by day right now as we move folks and some of these sections around. Any questions about that from the enrollment perspective before we get into the rest of the update?
Are they all different grade levels?
Yes.
Anyone else?
So the 36 students on file, are those the students that you're kind of talking about in that middle space, who maybe they haven't closed on their house or...
So the enrollment report that was published online, and that you have in front of you, that shows us down 35 from 20, should be 2021 there, by the way, not 2020. As of tonight, that's actually only 15. So 20 more have fully registered since Friday, when this was reported.
This was the best thing that's on file?
Yes. The 36, I'm sorry, down below. I'm sorry, Jackie.
That's mid.
35, I'd like you to...
Yep.
Yes, but I think I'd have to get the updated number on that since Friday. That one I didn't call today. On the homeschool, the difference between homeschool and new registrations.
But that could be a whole other kind of...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Related to enrollment, I'd point out that we still have not filled all of our open choice seats. We've been working at that, as all school districts in the state have. Said the same thing last year. There has statewide been a little bit less of interest in the program, and I think part of that is still leftover piece from pandemic and riding longer on a bus and more possibility that that might bring, that you might get sick with COVID-19 and so forth. I think our Hartford families in general might have been making, this is a general statement, but making decisions to keep students closer to home and not sending them out as much as they had in previous years to other districts. So we are looking at that. We have a meeting scheduled this week or next week?
The 9th.
The 9th. Oh, it's two weeks from now. I never know what date it is. You already know that. I have to look at the calendar constantly. We're meeting with CREG to discuss this and see if there's anything else that we can do as a school district, and we'll see what happens there. But I know that CREG is actively recruiting students in the state to participate in the open choice process. So bottom line is, it's a numbers game, and there aren't that, there aren't enough students in the lottery to fill all of the seats that exist in the Hartford area.
Question. Knowing that school starts Monday for students, and this meeting's happening on the 9th, when is sort of the last day additional students could... And I'm just looking from an academic standpoint, you know, missing the first couple of weeks of school.
Well, we, generally speaking, ideally, they're with us by the end of September. If they're coming in in pre-K, which is the norm, we definitely try to do that, because we also have a waiting list of families. And as you know, we have open choice seats to fill. We have students with special needs who need to have a slot, and then also the Avon peers and Hartford peers. So it's juggling numbers in pre-K, trying to make sure that we don't leave too many spots open, but we also hold them open for any one of those three opportunities. So meeting on the 9th doesn't mean that nothing has been happening in between. We've had a number of conversations. We just wanted to sit down together in person, particularly with some of the new staff that we have on board, so they could also in person meet our contacts at CREG, because I know most of them, but our new folks do not. So we're just going to sit down and at least have a meeting about the program in general.
So are you thinking, so this 107 choice students could go up from that number, or that's the cap, that's our percentage?
No, it could go up from that number. I believe we are down, is it 11 right now?
We're down nine.
Nine.
And students can still register at any time. That meeting is really just to do some game planning, both for this year but also for future years, and what we might do to just find out from them, is there anything we're missing as a district, something we can, you know, do to entice some more students to come here to Avon and join us.
Okay, thank you.
Nine is more open seats than we're used to having at this point, though, which is why I bring it up.
Are the districts having similar problems?
Yes, that's... Yes, that's what I'm saying. From a big picture standpoint, generally speaking, most are having the same issue, because there aren't as many students that have put into the lottery to attend church schools as there are seats.
Do you find that siblings tend to want to come?
Yes.
So that's not an issue?
I haven't seen that be an issue. More often than not, I've seen all siblings come through. Not every single one, but most of the time.
So I'll just take, and I just want you to know how grateful I am that you're all working so hard. I just really believe in this program. I know the district really believes in this program. I think it benefits in district students and out of district students, and I really think we're all grateful that you're all working so hard to figure out in such an open way how we can, you know, do the best job we can for our in district and out of district students. So just thank you for all that work you're doing right before school starts.
Any other questions about that?
You'll hear about that, this briefly again, when we talk about finances, because that is the other end of that, something with the programmatic end of open choice and the commitment that Avon made years ago to participate in the program and to bring in students from Hartford, in the Hartford area. But there's also the finance piece that we budget alongside of those seats. And so at this point, if those seats were unbill, there was also a budgetary impact. So bringing it up there for both reasons tonight, for everyone to know that's on our radar. Any other questions about enrollment? So, I can't sit down and do this, because I can't see it. I can't see all of you, but our normal screens are not working. You knew that the last time we were here, I think. So we don't want to replace these TV screens anyway, because our BenQ boards have been at a better purchase, so we will keep up with our BenQ boards. We just might do some different mounting and things to this room, including to the mic system that's not working properly right now. So we want to go through a few updates. I wanted to also give you the opportunity to hear from some of the other members of the team on the work that we've been doing. So I guess this is my superintendent's report, so to speak, but I think it would be whoofus to have everybody here participate in doing that, because we have all done a lot of work to be where we are now. And I want to make sure that you're able to ask them questions also. So I wanted to start with the financial updates, Susan, and I'll pass So I wanted to start with the financial updates, Susan, and I'll pass this down to you. We'll go from that to the introduction of new staff. Mr. Medic's going to speak about that, new staff orientation, Mr. Janini's going to do. And then I'll wrap it up with our administrative retreat overview and any other questions that you have.
Thank you. So. So we have it on the agenda, it's financial update. And I'm holistically calling it systems and operations update for our focus point on the blueprint. So I'm going to speak to you items that the entire team, operations, Mr. Altamis, custodians, maintainers, Mrs. Ferry, and the entire IT team, as well as my entire team in the business office, what we've worked on this year. So for over the summer, I want to give an update on our end-of-year funds that the board approved in June of '22. We used the open choice funds to purchase instructional equipment, supplies for our visual arts department, music, science, wellness, world language at the high school and the middle school in Thompson Brook. We purchased textbooks for business, social studies, and math at the high school and middle school. We also purchased English, language, arts instructional supplies for our readers' and writers' workshop, as well as other ELA programs throughout the district at all the schools. Other significant June purchases we made, we purchased our Chromebooks grades two and five. Purchasing them in June allowed us to receive them, be delivered, and then be prepped by the IT team so they were able to be deployed during this first week of school, as well as our laptops for our teachers here at AHS and AMS. And we did place the order, contract, and hoped to have the technological upgrades done for here in the community room for this. But as we'll talk about in a few moments, supply chain issues have not allowed us to have that delivery and installation prior to tonight. But we do have that contract and we hope to have that up and going just as soon as possible. Over the summer, our custodial maintainer team, along with the town, did some capital maintenance projects. These are just a highlight of what they did. Our library carpets were replaced at Roaring Brook, Pine Grove, and Thompson Brook. We did lock replacement throughout AHS. That's going to help us with secure, increase security, as well as we're interacting a new protocol for key distribution that we hope to do with every building as our capital plan to replace all the locks, to make a more secure building district-wide, as well as here at this particular building. Let's give, allow us to have levels of keys that'll do certain things without getting into particulars with that. We did painting on the first floor in various areas at Avon Middle School. We painted exterior doors at Thompson Brook, the middle school and high school. We did security enhancements throughout the district. Some of those highlight moving the Roaring Brook Security Office to make it a little bit easier when you enter Roaring Brook. We now have a security officer has their own office and enters to greet visitors and guests so they don't have to enter that front office first. Pine Grove, we able to establish a man trap. So when you walk into Pine Grove, we have the same security we have at other buildings there. We've installed some new cameras and some other physical security items that we won't go into in public, but we have made other enhancements throughout the district. The high school gym floor was refinished. We also had on our facility use to do the gym, the stage floor. That unfortunately has not, again, supply issues and availability of contractors. That will be done whenever we have a chance during a break or next summer to get that stage refinished so our productions have a smooth surface there. The town graciously included in their ARPA funds parking lot money to repave Pine Grove. So they paved it for us and they lined it for us. So it was great. They came in and did a really great job there. Our information technology department has had a very busy summer. Just a few of the items they did were install additional Wi-Fi access points throughout the district. Tonight, it's benefiting, we have great service while we're here. Installation of a new Mac lab at the high school. And that's going to help our music and digital photography. So our old computers that we had there couldn't support the software, the advanced software that the music tech classes and digital photography classes offer. So this new lab that was mostly funded through the PEGPedia grant that Elizabeth obtained, we're able to let us install that. We did updated network management systems that secures our infrastructure for our network, makes it a little bit less accessible to outsiders, as well as upgraded camera servers that'll allow for those additional cameras that we install throughout the district and gives us a little bit better retrieval footage there. As we looked at the new school year, I wanted to talk about this school breakfast and lunch update. Many of you may have heard on the news the last few days that free lunch was ending. That's federally ending. The state is using a pool of their funds to provide free lunch as long as they can. So I'll qualify that a little bit. Each, each district.
Sorry, I'm trying to do it without interrupting you.
Sorry. I can't see it.
There we go. Thank you.
That surely did. So what the state did is they pulled money that they had from all the different COVID funds they received from the federal government. And they've set aside a pool of funds based on the district's poverty percentage, their free and reduced participation, and number of other factors. They've given a pool of funds to each district. And the districts then can draw down from those funds in order to provide free meals for as long as they'll last, the pool of funds. So what we want to encourage families, make sure we get the note out, is that we are having free meals as long as they'll last. But it's really important that those families still apply for their free and reduced application if they qualify. That's actually going to help us keep our pool longer. The federal government's still going to pay for this free and reduce for those who qualify. And then the rest of the families will be able to pull down on these excess funds the state gave us. Also, once they run out, we don't want any hiccup during the school year for those families that are directly certified or that have free and reduced qualifying events for themselves. This will allow us to be seamless for those children, so there won't be any hiccup. They'll already have the paperwork done. There is no carryforward from prior year like there used to be because they haven't managed to fill them out in the last two years. So our current allocation, we anticipate that extending through December 2nd, 2022. We will monitor that every month. And if our drawdown is increased by this date or we have less participation than we think, then we'll extend that as we see fit, based on the money that's left.
What is the plan to notify parents when it ends?
Well, when Mrs. Drager sent out her message initially, she did give that December 2nd date. And we'll reinforce that as we get closer. I hope when we get to Thanksgiving, we'll be able to forecast. And I hope based on participation or a little bit more money from the state, I love us to get through at least the Christmas break and then make a clean break when we return from school then.
I just want to make sure it's not an email blast the day before tomorrow, send your kid with lunch.
No, absolutely not. No, I think the Thanksgiving break will be a nice time for us to update families from where we stand. We're going to stick with the December 2nd when they return or if we're able to extend that to the new year.
Okay, thank you.
So the financial outlook for the rest of the year. Our school breakfast and lunch program looks great. We had a great year last year and we're going to have these free meals in this offset. So program's going to be very robust this year. That's for our general fund and the rest of our spending. We have seen this summer really a global increase in almost everything. We did budget for that from our last season. When we budgeted, we anticipated rising costs, given the middle of the pandemic. And we did budget for that. But we are seeing on some items a 10% to 20% increase, just in orders that we had quotes, you know, we had priced items. We budgeted for very specific things. And when we actually go to execute them, they're much higher. And it could be the product that sells, it's not available, so then we need to find a substitute. Or the shipping costs because of fuel and the other issues throughout the world are causing that to be even higher. It's really just a global thing. So we're trying to find the best price we can for everything. Do we do what our options are to reduce that? Utilities and fuel, as everyone sees in their home bill, they continue to rise. Doesn't seem to be really relief. You know, personal fuel price is going down a little bit, but not really from, it hasn't trickled to the commodities. Repairs and maintenance service costs has also increased. Brought, you know, our costs to HVAC systems, any contracted costs has increased because those suppliers are seeing these price increases as well. Some of the things we're looking at, as we, as Dr. Carter Muller talked about already, is our pre-K enrollment and where we may need additional resources. We've already posted for some additional paraeducators to support that, support that program as we have this influx of students. Whether or not we have those pre-K seats filled for open choice will help us make those decisions and where those class sizes are going to be. But we do have plans that we already took a look at. If that sixth section is needed, we've already started to talk about that and we're front-loading the additional paraeducators so there is enough support in the five sections that we have. You remember that fifth section is being supported by our IDEA Special Education brand this year. We'll continue to monitor the budget. And as we have our monthly meetings with the finance committee and then the board, we'll keep you abreast as where the spending is. And if we need to put a freeze on, we will. We'll make sure that we're in a good place for winter. If we have these new families moving in that may or may not have additional needs, outplacements, IEPs, we'll have to address all those things as well. So we're really taking, we're opening the buildings. We have what we need, but we're going to keep a close eye on everything.
Questions for Susan? And just as a refresher, because we talk about it a lot over the course of these meetings, the committee meetings, Susan mentioned the fifth section of pre-K. That's because we had already added a section of pre-K and we're supporting it with grant funds. And we're talking about the possibility of needing another.
What is that classroom cap for pre-K?
We try, we try to stay below a real cap in pre-K because it, to be perfectly honest, it's hard to set an exact number. It really depends on what the needs in the classroom are because some students, as they enter, particularly as they enter school, are, present with much higher needs than others. And if you have three or four students in one classroom that need a number of supports, you may only want 12 or 13 or students in that classroom versus another classroom where we're a little bit balanced with the intensity, I'll say, of needs, we might have 17 or 18 students in it. But we basically do it section by section. Sometimes that changes also because very often what happens is students register, they don't come to us from birth to three where we know that they already have needs that they're getting services from on the outside of school before the start of school. And the responsibility for that transitions to us as soon as they begin pre-K. So ideally, when, that's the progression, that we already have an idea. We know student X, Y, and Z is coming to us from, they are coming to us from birth to three. And we have EBT and we decide what services we continue. On the other hand, it's not unlikely that we have a three-year-old student or even a four-year-old student who joins us and they have not presented with needs that have prompted an evaluation before they've arrived at pre-K. And then, once they're here with us, it's determining. So sometimes the students that we bring in to be the quote peers of the students with special needs end up actually also suits especially needs and IEPs. So we're then constantly shuffling to try to ensure that we have a balance of students that are regular education students, so to speak, and special education students, whether that be IEPs or 504 plans. Still doing that. Anything else? So, Mr. Medic, since I think what we wanted to do away with the czar when we did away with it, what preceded it, that which shall not be named COVID-19 czar. But certainly, Bruno led the charge, as usual, as the human resources director, in hiring a lot of staff this spring and summer. So you speak to that, Bruno.
So as you can see in the board packet, a two-page hiring report, we had a very busy spring and summer. We continue to fill vacant positions and will be working to fill vacant positions through this week and next week in hopes of being as close to fully staffed as possible. What we wanted to do tonight is introduce you to a few members of our staff who have been fully onboard and have pictures that we can share with you. Some folks who are in the hiring report were omitted from this presentation because we are still processing their employment and we'll be working to get photographs of them for their identifications. So we thought this would be an interesting way for you to put some faces to the names on the hiring report. I'll try to go through them briefly. I do have all of their names, positions, locations memorized, and I think the last place they were. But I may spare all the details.
So you're showing us their ID pictures?
Some of them, yes.
I'm just looking to the audience going, some people didn't.
Some of them, yeah, some of them don't know this. Some folks do have ID pictures and some folks who have been with us in previous capacities but have gone into new capacities are fortunate. They have either yearbook or. School photograph pictures. So we'll start with Avon High School. We have a mixture of certified and non-certified staff. Obviously, Dr. Lockhart as the new principal. Matthew Heiss joins us as a physics teacher. Emily Kane, AHS alum, just completed a teacher prep program and will be joining us as an interventionist. Ms. Champion will be serving as our part-time Chinese language teacher to help our students who are in the final year of their course of study this year. She's a native speaker and was raised in Taiwan. Ms. Rock Kumar is an Avon resident and parent and has worked in food services throughout the Farmington Valley and joins our nutrition service department. Carly Bernheimer joins us as a shared Spanish teacher between AHS and AMS, most recently at Hall High School. Matthew DeDonna made the decision to leave being a school administrator to return to the town he lives in and teach technology education.
Not that I need to ever think about doing that.
We love what we.
I think he was actually an assistant superintendent at one point.
And he has two young children who are enrolled in our schools and he wanted to have a better work-life balance. And he was a longtime tech ed teacher and administrator at Windsor and Goodwin Tech. So we're happy to have him. Ms. Rizzuto joins our nutrition service department. This is her first time in food services. She moved to the area to be closer to some grandkids and wanted to continue working. Ms. Colbrook joins us as a full-time school nurse here at Avon High School. Now for Avon Middle School, Christina, sorry, we only had your ID picture from when you were hired a couple of years ago.
I tried.
They tried. Ms. Wallace, Ms. Wallace as our new lead administrator to the middle school. Mrs. Linda Gerosa is an Avon resident, longtime paraeducator for us. She was one of our folks who participated in the Grow Your Own program. She went from being a non-certified paraeducator to receiving a master's in special ed. And she'll be joining us on a one-year interim position. Mr. David Addy joins us as the full-time school social worker at AMS, having worked in Hartford and South Windsor recently. Katia Viera is fresh out of her teacher prep program at Central and joins us as an art teacher. Mr. Anthony Guarta is a, has been a longtime custodian in school districts throughout Connecticut and joins us as an interim custodian this year for a longer duration absence for one of our current custodians. Lucia Lovless, who many of you know and has worked in our district in various capacities, returns to Thompson Brook as administrative assistant too, after working in the private sector for a little bit. Nicole Crockett joins us as a shared wellness teacher between Thompson Brook and Avon High School. And she'll be working with some of our special education wellness classes here at the high school. As we move to Pine Grove School, Mr. Paul Varell joins us as the safety and security specialist. He was the lead security lieutenant for Wesleyan University for the majority of his career and has worked in various school systems as well. Hannah Rosick now joins us as a teaching assistant. Ryan Minton, who's been a longtime paraeducator who left the district, has returned to the area and was rehired this year. We're happy to have Ryan back with us. Continuing along at Pine Grove, Mrs. Sandy Phillips, who began her career in education, stayed home to raise her children, is a resident in the community, came back to work with us in a non-certified role, returns to being a certified grade-one teacher. We're happy to keep Ms. Phillips in district. Allison Driscoll joins a family of educators. Her mom was my kids' teacher. And this is her first job. She's a native of Simsbury. At Roaring Brook, Mr. Sh. At Roaring Brook, Mr. Sean Bristol joins us as interim custodian. Again, he'll be with us to fill a vacancy created by one of our current custodians on a longer-term medical. Ashley Bialko joins us as a teaching assistant. Jennifer Stabnik joins us as a part-time shared art teacher between Pine Grove and Roaring Brook. Continuing at Roaring Brook, Mr. Christopher Mashaw joins us after a lengthy career with Bristol Police Department as an officer and detective. And Danielle Roy, an Avon resident and parent, returns after staying home with her children for a while and working with us as a teaching assistant to teach kindergarten this year. And finally, our district-wide staff. As we all have come to know, Mr. Haynes as our Student Family Supports Coordinator. We all look forward to working with him and he has been a wonderful addition to our central office team. Maria Mascoli rejoins the district. She'll be working with Mr. Haynes, focusing as the Assistant Coordinator of Internships, and she'll be working with some of our transition programs. We're hoping to leverage her knowledge of the community and local businesses to help reestablish partnerships for our students and return the internship program to what was prior to the pandemic. Christina Westcott, not to date the superintendent and I, but we're starting to show her age, one of our former students, joins us as an ESOL teacher and she'll be working between our elementary and high school.
It was painful. It's like yesterday, editor, vertical.
It's always great when folks come down the hallway and call us, "Mr. Medic, Mrs. Carnemola."
That's how you know they've known me, too, is Mrs. Carnemola.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Janini to talk about our staff orientation and Dr. Carnemola to talk about our administrative retreat, we currently have four certified vacancies. We have a certified staff of over 300, so we have four vacancies. We have two administrative vacancies, an assistant principal here at the high school and an assistant principal at the middle school. We have very large candidate pools and we conducted first-round interviews today at the middle school and we have candidates moving forward to a second-round interview tomorrow. And we're hopeful that that may yield us a candidate who can join us in the near future. We'll be conducting first-round interviews at, for the high school assistant principal next week. Again, a very talented pool. I believe we have well over 100 unique applicants, some of which applied for both positions, some applied for only one. So we've been very pleased with the candidate pool we received for that. We have two certified teaching positions that are currently vacant. As you know, Mr. Jim Post is serving as interim assistant principal at the middle school. Will be working to fill his teaching position with a long-term sub until he's able to return to the classroom once we finalize the assistant principal hire. And we have a part-time wellness teacher that we share between Pine Grove and Roaring Brook. That position is vacant. We are working towards hiring a final candidate this week. So we anticipate having all of our teaching positions and administrative positions filled by the end of September, but all of our positions for teaching, we anticipate to have filled by the end of this week, so we will have all of our classrooms filled. I do want to take a moment to thank a few folks individually. First and foremost, all of our building administrators. This process of recruitment, screening, interviewing began back in March. Many of you know, we posted positions in anticipation of the budget referendum with hopes of getting a jumpstart on hiring. We have, we have screened hundreds, if not thousands, of candidates for multiple positions. So to all of our building administrators, all of our department supervisors and their staff, thank you for the time, effort, energy, phone calls, emails to help us have a fully-staffed district or as close to it as possible. In addition, I want to thank two people in particular at Central Office who sometimes don't get a lot of credit, but Monica Mates, our Human Resource Specialist, and Barbara Cardwell, our Payroll Specialist. They're the primary people who onboard every single employee to our district. Every ID picture, paperwork, W-4 form, HSA form, they process every single one of them and they, they have been nonstop the last four weeks. So to those two, we are very grateful and we have not cleared final numbers yet, but working closely with Mrs. Russo, we do anticipate an overall savings in our certified staffing lines this year. So that is also good news for us and we'll have final numbers as future.
That was fantastic. You really know these people. That's wonderful. And I like the pictures, so I think that was good for us.
I will say, Jess and I were talking as we walked into new teacher orienta, new staff orientation on Thursday. This is a very talented group of individuals from our newest administrators to our newest part-time employees. Just genuine good people, a lot of folks who have connections to our community, whether as residents, parents, having lived here, having lived in the area. So we are very, very excited to see what creativity and innovation they can bring to their roles this year.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just curious. I know administrative positions were, there were more this year, but would you say this is typical in terms of the number of positions you've had to fill?
What I would say for us in terms of our teaching positions and our non-certified positions, this is what an average year should look like. As many of you know, for the past couple of years through the pandemic, we have had to hire multiple long-term subs, interim teachers to cover medical leaves, additional support staff through some of the grant funding that we received to support. Last year, our cafeteria for new staff orientation, we had close to 80 people. It was a much smaller group this year. What I will say is that this was a year where we had a few more administrative positions come around due to the retirements of several individuals. So I would like to say that we're back to a normal range of hiring and I hope it continues this way because the years of 80-plus employees was a challenge to find great employees, but also just a challenge to onboard and offboard many of them as well. So this is what a typical year should look like.
Thank you, Roberto, for putting that together. We, originally, the idea was to utilize that format when we all got together for convocation at high school. Convocation, for anyone who doesn't know, is basically this opening celebration when we were able to reopen the school for the last couple of years that has been forwarded in person by COVID and the restrictions related to it, that we were unable to bring the, you know, just about 500 individual staff working the district together. So we've been very excited and planning our in-person return to the great 22, 23 year here at the high school on Thursday morning and have this ready to go. And the HVAC system isn't complete at here at the high school. It's working here tonight. I know someone said earlier, "Is the air conditioning on?" Thank goodness the air conditioning is on in here, but it is turned off in the auditorium and it will remain that way for the next couple of days at least while they finish working out of the system. And besides that, I think it's going to be 90 degrees on Thursday and I don't think the employees of the district would want to sit all together in the room with no air conditioning. On top of that, a bigger issue to some degree is the fact that when the HVAC is off, it also means the ventilation is off. So there's no air circulation in the auditorium. We don't have any other space large enough to bring everyone together. So unfortunately, we are resorting back to a digital version of convocation, but we've learned a little something over the last couple of years and each year has gotten a little bit better, so we'll do the same again tonight. We'll be making the video. We have students involved again. We have pieces of their presentations such as this, honoring people for their years of service, honoring those who are receiving tenure, all the things we want to do in person. We put together, we haven't finished this yet, but what we will put together is, start to finish, what convocation would have looked like in person, probably minus some of the great music we could have had in person from the students also. And we will push it out to the entire district on the venue boards at the same time. So we're all going to be engaged in this at the same time. It's not a, hey, here's the, here's the video, you know, watch it if you feel like it. We're still all going to be sitting together watching it as if it's live, so.
Is the HVAC system working for the rest of the building and after the-
Yeah, so they're in zones.
Okay.
And the issue, like you heard Susan say tonight, a lot of it has been parts that couldn't be found, delays, and we're just grateful that it will be done hopefully in time for the start of school. If it were not, we would just not utilize the auditorium for a bit until they finished it, which is possible for us to do because we can move larger, you know, band, theater and salon classes for, on a temporary basis.
Okay, so after Mr. Medic and our district administrators hire all of that staff, we want to make sure they are set up for success here with us in Avon. And so annually, we run a new staff orientation program. It's a formal program that takes place over about five days and it's very carefully planned to make sure our new staff really know us as a district and know all of the resources available to them as they get started.
Just so you can see it here.
Oh, okay. So this year, the program took place from August 18th through the 24th. And as I said, it's an opportunity to acquaint ourselves with new staff and provide an opportunity for the new staff to better understand our mission. This year, it included all district administrators. It included 25 new certified staff and 13 new non-certified staff. And as Mr. Medic mentioned, we're still hiring staff, you know, as the days continue, but we had everybody included who'd been hired up to that point. And so as we, you know, sat down this year to get started, we talked a lot about our vision and our mission here in Avon and how we wanted to make sure that was clearly a part of the program. As is tradition, Dr. Carnemola really kicks off the new staff orientation, bringing them through our district mission and making sure they're aware of what we're about here in Avon, what are our main goals and focus areas. And one of those areas, of course, being connectedness and personal relationships. And as we looked at our old program, we realized there was a lot of stand and deliver. It didn't really feel as personal and connected as we might hope. And so we decided we wanted to model, practice what we preach a little bit as we went into our program this year. So we made a major change in two areas. Instead of having our 40-something new staff go around the room and introduce themselves one at a time, we did what we affectionately called a tabletop resume. So they worked in small groups and really collectively introduced themselves in terms of, whoop, thank you, collectively introduced themselves in terms of their years of experience, schools they'd worked in, the different types of certifications they had, and they really then took some time to introduce themselves to us as a group, which was really a nice opportunity. We do get to know our staff pretty well during the interview process, but when you take some of that pressure away of interviewing and sitting across the table and they could really sit together in a more comfortable manner, we really get to know them a lot more as the individuals who are going to be working so closely with our students here in Avon. So after that, we had an opportunity for them to present out and we did learn quite a bit of interesting facts in terms of our new staff. And so just a few highlights here and what they did. So if there was a group of four and they had each had four years of experience, they would have said their combined experience was 16 years. And so combined, in terms of our five groups that ran, we had a range of 26 to 60 years of experience in one single group of our new staff. Some highlights in terms of places they lived and of course, I didn't include it in the list, but they've learned, lived all over New England, including the valley. But we had France, Belgium, Mexico, India, Spain, Scotland, Peru, and Italy, just to name a few. So just to give you, you know, kind of the range of some of our new staff and some of the experiences they've had prior to joining us here in Avon. They worked for over 50 districts and 100 schools combined. So, you know, we always say we're really excited to bring new staff onboard because they bring with them a wealth of experiences from former districts, life living, you know, overseas. They bring that to us in the district and they also ask a lot of great questions. Why do you do that here in Avon? And it really gets us thinking. And there were numerous teaching certificates, including, and I, you know, thought this was kind of fun, besides first aid, CPR, we also had someone certified in scuba diving and someone with an excavator license. So the things you learn from your new staff as they get started. So if anyone's planning a trip this winter and needs a scuba diving instructor, we have one on staff and I'm very excited about that. The new staff definitely left, you know, orientation, I think, feeling excited. We got a lot of positive feedback about some of the changes. Our district administrators, I think, enjoyed it as well because, again, taking a page out of not standing and delivering, in order for them to introduce themselves, all of our district admin team sat and we did small group rotations. So groups of four or five staff would go around and sit with all of our district leaders and get to know them a little bit. We had some icebreaker questions. And again, overwhelmingly, at the end of that first day, I know our staff felt very connected, very excited, and really felt like the mission here in Avon was being realized even in their first experience. So it was a great way to start the program.
I know we didn't talk about this as we put this presentation together or added in the notes, but you saying the end piece here, Jess just reminded me. If you could just quickly touch on, I think it was a great idea that you had for moving forward throughout the school year and maintaining the connections of the groups and mentoring folks.
Sure. So we asked each district admin to adopt, if you will, one small group, collect their name, contact information, the school they'd be working in throughout the year. And we're going to have some strategic times, kind of carefully planned, when they'll check in with that new staff. And again, kind of another piece of that connectedness, personal relationships, that it's not just your principal, although we know our principals will be checking in with new staff all the time, but it might be our nutrition, nutrition services manager or our director of technology who's also checking in with you and making sure that you're off to a good start in your first year here in Avon. So, and they embraced that challenge, so they were excited to take that on as well.
Thank you. And obviously, all of us do that at various points throughout the year, but this was a way to standardize it, solidify it, and make sure that no one was seen less or more than anyone else and we all had connections with individuals. So thank you for that, Jess. Okay, so this is a continuum of school planning, cyclical, strategic planning, really, the way from the hiring process through the onboarding process, new staff orientation, administrative retreat and planning that we do, and then, as you know, coming to the board and doing that process also. And we continually do that cycle. Obviously, we've been a little bit stifled in some of our normal efforts over the last couple of years with our ability to be in person, not be in person, and so on, but we have still maintained this process. We're just thrilled, however, that we were able to do it again in a way that keeps meeting and focus and really gets people excited to move forward. So last Friday, we had our administrative retreat, which means every leader in the district got together. We were missing a couple of individuals who, personal things, well, and as you know, this is the time of year for returning students to college and sometimes we see some of our faculty, staff, administrators in and out right now, saying goodbye to students and we leave them in. But the majority of us were there. I think we were actually only missing two of our administrators. And we met at, what you see there, this is Yard Goats Stadium. This is the room that they allow as a community room to be utilized. So I thank Jess for the idea. We were thinking about where we could go to be somewhere else and just have a different fresh perspective than doing it, say, here or where have you. Shut everything out and our office phones aren't ringing and no one's knocking on the door and we're all just here focused in on where we've been and where we need to go. So we all came together in Hartford that day. We spent the entire day together. Later on, we, this isn't a part of the presentation, but just to give anyone an idea, we spent the entire day together, then the majority of us were able to attend a game together that night at the stadium with our families also, anyone that was able to bring spouses, partners, children. And so that was very nice because, as you know, there's a number of new people on the team and it was a way for us to get to know each other better and be able to spend some time team-building and so forth. So the nuts and bolts of it, however, are what I wanted to focus on tonight. And as you say, it's the first time we met in person since August of 19, totally different feeling. And what, we talked quite a bit about Jess, Roberto, Joey, Susan, and really- And what, we talked quite a bit about Jess, Roberto, Joey, Susan, and really all of the administrators as we went back and forth, getting ideas to plan for this retreat. I wanted to be sure that we were thinking in a way that was, I'll use Jess's analogy, moving out of the era of talking about how we walked uphill to school, you know, both ways in the snow with masks on and, you know, in other words, it's time to come out of talking about how difficult things have been and what we had to do as a result of the pandemic, and to take ourselves back entirely, not partially, to a place of what do we continue to do to move the district forward? Student performance, student and family connectedness, schools to use our resources, in other words, the four focus areas of our blueprint. And so we started the day just pushing everything aside, not looking at our data, not looking back at our strategic plan, our blueprint, not revisiting the list of things that we had done and hadn't done. We did all of those things in preparation for the meeting. But as we walked into the room, we started the day by saying, if we were to be known for something as a school district, what should it be? If we are the ideal Avon Public Schools, what is it that we are accomplishing for our students, for our faculty, for our community, for our families? What does that look like? And that's where we get the idea of, you know, dream big. This, I think, one of either Jess or Roberto said to them, to the administrators in the room, pretend we have the black card, that, let's not think of the price tag of anything. If there's money associated with what we're thinking about doing, that's not what this is about. This is about what do we think we need to focus on as we move forward? Not the on-the-ground pieces necessarily right now, what we would call more the balcony. Let's look from the balcony and say, what does the future look like for us? And then, of course, as we say, you have to get down on the dance floor and say, what do we do to make that happen? And so we did both of those things over the course of the day. Thank you for taking pictures. We tried for them not to look like mugshots. Shirley told me she wasn't sure if we achieved that, but just wanted to give you an idea of what it looked like for us in the room. We left with three big takeaways. And of course, number one, I think, so we would expect this to come out, is that we want to ensure that every student is able to perform at their best level, that every student achieves at high levels, whatever that means for that individual student. And what we really talked a lot about was how we create the conditions for that to happen, and that's what you see under number two and number three. So the majority of the time on Friday, we spoke about what it might look for us to implement some more innovative practices as a whole. What does that look like from a structured standpoint to actually allow time, space, and thought for innovation, and then allow all of us to engage in the action steps that might help us to bring new programs, bring new ideas, bring new experiences for students to the table. And we also, therefore, talked a lot about how to continue to get input from and partner with everyone in the buildings, whether, you know, students and adults, our family members out there, our community members, our police department, our fire department, our town. As a whole, what does it look like when we have created the conditions that allow this high level of achievement because to the ideal, if you like, the ideal, but it's 100%, you strive for the ideal, of our students, families, faculty, staff, and community members are engaged in there and connected to their educational experience while they're on the scene. And we talked a lot about the ways we might be able to push that forward. And one, just a small step forward, and I don't want to speak much about the rest. There's a reason I'm leaving out what we talked about, from what do those action steps look like, because, one, our administrators are going to go through the same kind of thought process with the building employees, all faculty, all staff. You might remember when we originally designed the blueprint years ago, this is how we did it. We came up with what we think we needed to focus on, and we asked teachers and staff in the buildings what their thoughts were, and we came back together, put those together. We brought those two to board. We had the same conversation as a board, and that's where we pushed forward with what the goals for the next year, three, five years would be. So basically, we have re-energized the blueprint, talked a lot about how to make sure it's really living and guiding the work that we do if we're living up to these ideals. And one small way that we did that is to redesign the way we structure our leadership meetings, both at Central Office and out in the buildings, to be, we would say, refocused on achievement, data, and the progress that we're making. This doesn't mean that we lost that focus and we weren't focused on that at all over the last two years, two and a half years, but what we're saying is, of course, there were things that got in the way. And the best-laid plans of having a leadership team meeting where what we were planning to do was look at X and Y pieces of data and develop some action steps turned into, the state sent this new diatribe of regulations that we have to figure out how to implement for COVID. Let's put that aside for a minute. We'll come back to that. We've got to figure out how to do this. And inevitably, we went back to all of those conversations, but our goal for this year is to completely refocus ourselves on how we create these conditions to be innovative and have community partnerships that help lead to better student achievement. And I'll pause there because I assume you still have some questions, but I don't want to keep talking at you either. That was a lot. That was a lot. Thank you all for helping to put this together and speaking pieces of it, so I didn't have to give it all around.
Anybody on the board?
I love the process that you went through and now you're going to bring into your buildings. I'm wondering if you have an expectation of revising the blueprint, adding to the blueprint?
I think what we will see, and what we had the conversation about as a leadership team, is the four focus areas, I don't expect to see us change because they are a broad, those are a broad set of visionary goals that, basically, no matter what we are focusing in on for, whether it's ground-level action steps or it's longer-term planning, it will fit into one of those four sections. We're talking about teaching and learning. We're talking about school, climate and connectedness. We're talking about our systems and our use of resources. Everything fits into one of those categories. So I would not expect us to change our overarching focus, but I certainly would expect us to change the individual goals that some of our buildings have, that the district has, that our teachers have, that our staff have, because that I would expect us to do every year, that we're making, if we're making progress, and this is a cyclical journey to look at our improvement, if you will, things should be changing, things should be stable. I would expect it to be a lodging plan for us as a district and as a board.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions?
Did I miss anything? I think that's covered. Certainly, you did a great job, so I wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Now we move on to our consent calendar. Unless anybody has the desire to pull a topic, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as it is?
Still moved.
Moved by Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to take Liz. All right, Liz, second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, the sentence passes unanimously. So congratulations to all of our hires, and also that field trip looked amazing at the middle school as well.
I threatened my son, I would know.
So we kind of, we glossed over it, but that was so fabulous. So it's great that our kids are getting back out there into the world in order to enjoy this. I think Mr. Macy, in our audience, you're here to represent that particular piece, even though we see you regularly, but we're thrilled that you're offering this to the students. I think that would be great as well. So thank you so much for condoning that as well. I think that's fabulous. So next, we will move to new business. If everybody can take that page out, so we can just look at the dates for our Board of Education Committee meeting. Laura mentioned in her update for policy that there is a conflict for her first meeting. I guess my question is, is there a conflict? Should we still approve it as is and then make adjustments later? Or do you want to remove that date and find a correction before approving it? Meaning, you'll approve everything else? Do you have a preference?
Which? Which are you wanting to?
I would think it would be better to take that date out and just approve the rest.
So it doesn't require a special meeting?
Right. Or we can pick a new date now if it works for you.
You said that September 13th was the issue?
Right. I mean, because I had spoken with the board clerk earlier in the day, presented some options that you always haven't presented.
We have some options, but I think, from your perspective, making sure the rest of the policy committee members can do it. We're probably best off removing the date, approving the rest, and to your point, then it will not be a special meeting when we decide.
Right. Then we're going to take it off?
Yes. So approve it minus September 13th, the policy.
Are there any other dates that are conflicts? All right. So can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education Committee meeting dates for school year 2022 to 2023, minus the first policy meeting of September 13?
Still moved.
By Jackie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Paige. All in favor?
Aye.
The sentence passes unanimously. All right. So this is the part of our meeting where we will go into an executive session.
No.
Oh, I apologize. I'm moving too fast. Communication from the public. Is there anyone else that we have assigned others? All right, thank you. And then, this is good. Thank you for stopping me. The Board of Education members, if anybody wanted to speak this evening, this is your time.
I just wanted to quickly say how impressed I was with the hiring process and the, everything you guys did in a climate where we all know there's a dearth of bus drivers, school personnel, all sorts of things. I think you've done a very impressive job all summer, and I, I'm sure I speak, I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure everybody else on this board very much appreciates all your time and efforts that you put forth so that we can start off the school year correctly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else? Jeff?
So, because normally what happens when we go into an executive session, everyone leaves us. They don't return. So to our administrators and our staff in the room, best of luck on this new year. It's always a rocky start when we get started, and know that, I know all your hard work that you've put in, and thank you, and I'm sure it'll be a fantastic year. I just want to make sure we thanked you before you all left.
Jeff?
I echo all the sentiments of Lisa and Jeff, and welcome, and thank you for all of your hard work. It feels really, it feels so exciting to be getting back to kind of a normal year with all this new talent. I'm really looking forward to hearing about what you all do this year. So thank you so much.
I just want to congratulate everyone in this room. I mean, you, first of all, welcome to the new people and welcome back to the people who are in new positions. It's just wonderful, and I feel very honored and proud to be on this Board of Education in unconnected, and that's because of all of you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you. So now we will move into an executive session, but we'll allow time for the camera to be able to do it. Or we, it's up to you. Do you want to stay here or do you want to walk over to the left?
Walk.
That's good. Okay, so that's what we will do.
Can we just shut the window?
Yep. At 8:23, we'll invite in Dr. Carnamola, our two assistant superintendents, Mr. Janini and Mr. Medic, and Ms. Russo. Is there anyone else? All right, they will join us.